We are.
You're allowed.
Excellent. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular school committee meeting on Wednesday, Wednesday, February 12, 2025. We could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I have.
Flag is over Michael's shoulder. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Since we do have some folks in the audience, a quick moment of reflection here. Thank you all. I would like to entertain a motion to approve item four, the consent agenda. Do I have them?
Salute.
We'll have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries. Excellent. Is there any public input tonight? Roger. Sheila. All right. Thank you for joining us on this brisk.
I want to say one thing for me.
Please, just say your name and address.
My name is Ellen King, and I want to say I'm very proud of the school system and school committee for supporting diversity and acceptance of all students in school, and I hope that you continue to do that because I think it's so important for the safety of all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Excellent. Item six, Principal McKinnon, winter activities and events at Wilbur McMahon School.
Rocky, did you get it up on the screen yet?
Oh, my God. Rocky, okay. You can add some edge.
You can wait against that.
You can see the blood from here.
You've all done it. You've all been there.
It was bad.
I've never been there.
You've done better than Knock on Wood, sir.
Never done that in school, anything.
That was maybe not.
Last time. It's here with some firm in Connecticut.
That can't be argued. The different tents, those big wooden. It's the next step.
It was dragging during the budget.
Yeah, it was lag time.
I thought it was just acting like if the electronics were cold, it's just a slow transition.
First of all, if it gets up on the board, our first tech team this past weekend at New England Tech in the state tournament, and they finished, first of all, I think we've talked about this before, they are one of only three middle school teams that are involved with it. This first tech team, under the direction of Marissa Brazil, one of our science teacher, and Joshua Gay, they've been working pretty much since October 1, two days a week, from three to five, you know, preparing for this event. They had a great showing. They didn't get the, they finished 18th out of 23, but I think competing against other high schools, I think it's outstanding. If you ever get a chance, just, I mean, right now, I think that they're slowing down, although they are going to kind of get something going later on in the year. If you ever get a chance to see their robot and how it moves, it's spectacular. They did a fantastic job. I couldn't be prouder of them. We also had our second grade on the direction of Ms. Oriole, did a little musical, and it was, oh, gosh, I think it was the first week of January coming back, or second week of January coming back. It's called Journey to Outer Space. The second graders get up on stage, that just did a fantastic job with it. Real neat to see them up there. We had this past week, a week ago, we had our script spelling bee take place here. We had, we had 12 students participating, three eighth graders and two from each grade level, from grade three on, and it came down to a fourth grader, Ms. Ada Templeton, and a sixth grader, Ms. Annie Morley. Annie was last year's state runner-up in the script spelling bee, and she is going to be going back again this year as our winner. Just talking to Annie, I see her walking in, you got to be very cautious of her, she has this smile, but beneath that smile is a real competitor. She is, she's ready to take on the state again in the script spelling bee. We also recognized our students of the month in January this past week, and the IB theme for that was knowledge. So our students were treated to a little ice cream treat here, I believe it was last Friday. Boys and girls basketball is winding down real quick. In fact, Friday, unless we get a schedule change, Friday is the last home game, it's the last game, it's versus Block Island, our first game with the girls starts at 1:30 in the afternoon, and then 2:30, that's okay, 2:30 the boys will be starting up, and obviously, the reason for that is Block Island Ferry goes back to Block Island, I believe, at 5 o'clock is the last ferry out, so we have to get them in and out of here rather quickly. But that's always a fun event, it's a great event, the day before the February break, we get the entire school down there at 1:30 cheering on their classmates and peers. And finally, we had our 100th day of school was yesterday. We had some great pictures. We have a chance, we'll probably send them out on Facebook. It was the 100th day, and certainly, the students at the primary level down here really enjoyed, they do a lot of activities, you know, involving 100. It was fun to see them, you know, marching with their little crowns, you know, around the building, counting their steps, you know, by five, by tens. So it was good. So that is basically what's happening in the school this time.
That's fine.
That's all right, that's all right, Laurie. Just don't tell Darwin.
Let's get this slide where I've been doing it.
I feel like you've shared some of these photos with your principal's message, as well as.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm gonna say.
Yeah, so it's, we'll circle, we'll cycle them through. Do you have anything to report on item six, too, summary of bullying relating?
Yeah. It's funny, sometimes it runs in spurts, and really, over the last, you know, from the time the school year started until the Christmas break, there was very little, but we've had a little, little peak time over the last month and a half. We've had three different issues. One of the issues, I do think it ended up being a little bob back and forth, I would not call it bullying, but the other two issues were certainly dealt with some bullying issues, but we investigated three different items.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Mitchell, IT Director Mitchell, Dr. Mitchell, wearing all the hats tonight. And we turn it over to you for item seven, one, a grants update.
Yeah, this is on the emerging contaminants grant. I did report to you last Friday that President Trump's executive order did put our emerging contaminants grant in peril. And so it was frozen on inauguration day, January 20, according to Aaron Karishi, a business development analyst at the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, who has been our sort of liaison between the school and the bank. And he did reach out to me to say that they were unfrozen after Rhode Island Judge John McConnell, Chief Judge of the US District Court for the District of Rhode Island, put a TRO on the freeze temporarily restraining. If you saw it again to me today and said that at the moment, the funds are still available for dispersment, so we do have some invoices, fussing our fingers, we haven't heard of any changes since Judge McConnell issued TRO that prevented the freeze from taking effect. We're hoping that emerging contaminants grant funding will remain available for projects with executive agreements. So thank goodness, we've put pedal to the metal and expedited this process. We spent four months doing nothing but focusing on working with the chemical engineers, Haley and Aldrich submitting, and going before the town council, infrastructure bankers, you know, joined us, joined with, joined me at that meeting, and so did John McNamee. Town Council voted it, so it's a fully executed agreement. So he said, the situation is still a bit volatile, but reasonably certain because we got in way under the wire, the $550,000 should not be rescinded or immediately frozen until this plays out. So we're going to, we do a couple of invoices from Haley and Aldrich, our engineers, run to our diligence for the town water system and the school water system. That's the update, so it's better than it looked last Friday.
There. Good work.
That's about it.
I mean, all we can do is be diligent, fire those invoices, and Sean, do you know of anything that has changed? Has it gone to the Court of Appeals? I feel like you might.
I do not, I do not believe it's gone to the Court of Appeals yet. If it's going to go to preliminary injunction, at which point, then there might be some appeal to the First Circuit, but just like the rest of the country, it's kind of day by day.
Right. Thank you. Mr. McNamee, just had a nice.
So just a quick update on 24. We've completed a lot of hard work on the school side, so we are looking at a surplus of 61, 962 for the 24 year. The town is brought in some additional help to get them ready for the audit. We're anticipating, we had a meeting with the general , I believe, a couple of weeks back, and he's given us an extension until April 30 to submit those financials. They were due at the end of December. Right now, it does look like we should be able to meet that deadline. We had a meeting today with the outside accountants that were brought in to help the town, and they seem to be moving along, so we're hoping that we can get this thing wrapped up by the end of April for 24. We submitted all IU COA numbers and everything, so we're good at the school side. 25 is looking like, still looking like a small deficit. I've got it at around 52,000. You know, that could change. I mean, we've got some things in there that, you know, you don't want to pull them out of the budget until we get a little closer to year end, but, you know, we had some increase, obviously, in tuition on the revenue side that we hadn't budgeted for, but conversely, we had some increases in some educational materials expenses that obviously is a result of enrollment, but we've also had some additional expenditures for plumbing and HVAC repairs, as well as fire alarm that certainly were unexpected. So right now, looking at a small surplus, even with the deficit, even with that deficit, and if we, I was waiting till the audit before I proposed the $162,000 transfer into the capital, that would leave us, after those, after the surplus deficit and the transfer of about $250,000 of accumulated surplus, which is a number that the, I think the budget board wants to be somewhere between 200 and 300,000, so that would be, that would be pretty good, be the place to be at this point.
Is that in the general? That's what you're referring to, right?
General.
The faculty in the general.
Thank you, John. And thank you for your presentation tonight, for you and Lori and all those attributed to that presentation earlier. I know we're, it is the first run, we will have the opportunity to see that another time as committee, and then, of course, the presentation to the budget. Committee reports, policy subcommittee report. We are yet to meet, however, we are kind of waiting on the ruling from the Attorney General of federal to see where we stand with our policies, are we not? In some fashion, in terms of how it might.
Certainly, if, if things change that may impact Title IX, that may impact other policies that are federally driven, we would certainly review those on a case by case basis.
Excellent. Portsmouth School Committee Liaison Report, Mr. Weisher.
Thank you. The Portsmouth District School Committee met on Tuesday, February 11. One of the highlights include that the committee recognized PHS senior Ashley Murphy, who was recently named as one of two RIA representatives for the US state senate youth program, the Millville School Community for its five-star rating in the 2024 Rock Accountability System. Dr. Ken, where these district updates include the recent district and school events, as well as information on 2025 survey works and winter break. And in the business portion of the agenda, the committee reviewed the first draft of the district's budget proposal for '26. Do that, two more drafts before taking a final vote on the 11. The committee also approved two contract renewals and updated membership list for the district building committee, post-promotion, two more policies to discuss to the human policy drafts. The month previous, some of the highlights were a photo project that was completed by the students that they're projecting in the main lobby on the, on the screens out there, which was kind of a cool new thing that they were doing. And that's pretty much.
Awesome. I know you mentioned the prom. Don't we, as a committee, donate some dollars to that after-party?
We'll get it later any minute, and then it'll show up on next month's agenda.
Perfect. Well, it's just reminding, it's on your analysis, then I know that we have that coming down. Excellent, Sean, Mark. Wellness Committee Liaison, I think we have your meeting coming up soon.
Yes, the meeting is coming up tomorrow afternoon at 3:30, so.
Excellent.
And Ride is coming, the first order on the agenda is Ride is coming with the 101 presentation, so I guess I'll be learning, learning some new things.
Did either of you attend the 101 that was at the, excellent, and I know.
Three of us did. Yeah, Mark and Amy and I.
Also Judith Spermuli, is that right? She sent the links, so I can share that with Michael. I can share that, you know, we have to do these continuing education. Sean, can you speak to that?
Yes, under.
So good work, you guys are already done. If you did the 101, you're in. I mean, that covers today, and I believe you even presented.
Yes, was one of the presenters.
Very entertaining, informative. It was really nice.
Yeah, I thought you were the best of all the presenters.
Did you do that?
Can dog catcher slide? No dog catcher slide.
It's really good. Anyway, go ahead.
But yeah, just briefly, under state law, school community members are required to get six hours of school community training per year.
Thank you, and so good luck tomorrow at your initial.
Thank you.
Your inaugural meeting at the Wellness Committee will be an excellent thing. And then, Mr. Mark Weischer with the Town Recreation Committee Liaison Report.
Sure, lots going on over there. I'll try to be brief, just a bunch of approvals, really. Over the last couple of weeks, a couple of interesting items are that the tree committee is going to be working over the next year or so to replace and removes and improve the tree situation over at Veterans Field in that area, working with the Wellness Committee on that. The committee also approved a donation for a new scoreboard for our gymnasium, for the rec committee, also working with Chief Petron and talking with him yesterday, looking at a mid-March, hopefully, beginning for installing of AEDs at Veterans Fields, working with the town on getting the rec committee website page attached to the town's website. They have an extra page there and an extra calendar that they're willing to give over to the rec committee to get that back up and running, so that is happening. And I think that's really all that goes to what's happening here at the school. The tennis courts are moving forward, everything's heading in the right direction, and we'll meet again this month. We'll have more, we'll say after that.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I do the scoreboard one day, Principal McKinnon. You make a call, and this is what happens. We have a news release. No, that's excellent news. I know many parents will be, and spectators will be thrilled in talking to Coach McKinnon. He remembers that scoreboard when he played at Wilbur McMahon.
It's time to hold girl up.
So.
Maybe it should go to the Historical Society when we take it down.
It is an art.
Against our skin, rid of it.
Yeah.
Be a cool thing.
Awesome. Thank you, Mark.
Yep. Got it.
Item 10, we have a connection here, a little here, let me just bring this up. I will consider a motion to discuss the master services agreement between Little Compton School System and Hazel Health and telehealth services. It looks like this is a professional services agreement that is.
If it is.
I believe it.
No cost to us. You put that correct better than me.
Right. Rhode Island became the first state on the East Coast to implement a telehealth service to expand mental health supports for students. It is a partnership between this and Hazel Health. Entering into an agreement with them is cost neutral, it's zero. It doesn't add anything to a school's district's budget. We have decided, the student support services team, to participate in the at-home services component only. We feel like we have enough social emotional learning supports here on site. We have social workers, guidance counselor, and a school psychologist, school nurse, wonderful case managers in our special department. But we do feel that some of our families could benefit from beyond the school day access. Sean's firm did look at the contract and generated it, and as he and his staff members at his law firm have sort of localized all of these contracts for the districts that they support and represent, and so he could speak to the legal component. I think we can all speak to the need for more mental health supports for our children and teens. We're at a critical point in our country and throughout the world, notably post-pandemic, but even before the pandemic, we saw an uptick in needs, and that's how Mary Elizabeth Miller ended up here in 2018 as the first social worker to be hired by the town of Little Compton School Department. And so that has just been ticking up for all these years and exponentially during and after the pandemic. So this is something that our student support services team can assist in implementing and actuating. We don't know what that'll look like yet, but we look forward to it and hope you support it, and we have positive votes in that regard.
Perfect.
And simply put, to echo what Lori said, my firm has looked over, I personally looked over the contract, this one, this particular contract was developed in mind with the at-home services only. When we say at-home, since it's tele-service, what that really means is, we have students that are identified that could utilize the service. We put parents in touch with Hazel Health, and then on their own time, off school grounds, they facilitated. Some other districts, not Little Compton, have wanted to go another route where students could actually access the services during the, during the school day. So that's when we, so when I say at-home, that's, that's what I mean. It's off school grounds when they're accessing that. The contract has been reviewed, and from a legal perspective, I can recommend approval.
Excellent. Do I have a motion to approve?
I have a question on that first.
We'll have a discussion regarding it, but do I?
Yeah, I mean, you could either have discussion now or take the motion and have discussion before the vote.
Yeah, I just want, we can have a discussion before the vote. We have Michael. And do I have a motion to approve the master services agreement between Little Compton and the Hazel Health system?
Salute.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Michael.
So what is the advantages of school getting involved with this program? I understand that you're looking at the at-home aspect of that, but what's the advantages of us getting involved with that? Why would we want, as a school, and when there is, as there's, we have so many services in school, and there's so many services out of school, right? So what's the advantages of us getting involved with this? Why would we, why would we even want to go into here? If this is something that's being between the family and a provider, which, that's a private thing, why are we putting our hands in on that?
Well, the program, the partnership is for both in-school and out-of-school, and we chose to go with just the latter. There are so many benefits to families and kids accessing mental health supports beyond the school day. Kids are with us just a quarter of the day, hours in a day, less than half the days in the calendar year. They are at home more than anywhere else. And so it behooves us to recognize that we are the smallest piece of the puzzle when it comes to supporting children. Obviously, we're a consistent and powerful component in the equation of healthy childhood in young adulthood, but it is the home. And these supports also extend to families, also extend to folding in the parents, folding in supports for other family members. It's a holistic sort of wraparound service that is free, and with, you know, another 18 hours a day, and, you know, 190 days or so beyond we see the kids, it's necessary if we want to make a dent in the number of kids who are hurting.
I understand what the services do outside. What is our part? Why are we getting involved with this, is what I guess is what I'm asking. Because if this is, we're not interested, from what I'm understanding, we're not interested in the services that would happen within the school. You're just, your recommendation is services that would happen outside of school between a family and a provider. What is our part? I understand what the services do. I understand it's there to help the people that need the help and what have you, and that's great. I mean, that's what their job is for. But my question is, why are we getting involved with that?
The school knows the children. The school guidance counselor knows the children, the school's psychologists, the school's two clinicians, the teachers, the principal. And they can inform the process. They can determine which kids likely need more support and which families need more support at home with kids in crisis. And so it is a way to provide wraparound services beyond the school day to fill a gap. And families, parents, guardians, caretakers overwhelmingly trust the staff here when they recommend next steps to children who are in crisis. And that trust is a pipeline to the right services for those kids beyond what we can provide, less than half the days of the, of the calendar year, one quarter of the hours in those few days. So there are so many benefits, Mike.
I understand, but we would do that now, right? We would, hopefully, we would be doing that now. If, if our guidance councils saw that there's, there's an issue and they need a recommendation to the parents, that we should already be doing that now, right?
But this is free. This is free.
Yeah, no cost.
No cost to the families.
Okay.
This is absolutely free. And so that is, that's everything.
So is this, if a recommendation comes from one of our professionals, I'll say, in the school, does that make the family eligible to participate in this program? Is that, I I don't.
Essentially, we essentially just had a referral.
As a referral, yeah.
We would, we would, we would put them in contact with Hazel Health and then they would, that family would then connect with Hazel Health. To obtain the services. Uh.
So the recommendations of, recommendations of the people that they trust in the school, the families trust in the school.
Okay, so a family would be able to be recommended to an this provider at no cost.
Yeah.
Through a recommendation through our professionals here at the school. Is is, am I understanding that correctly?
That's, yes, we would.
The channel.
That's the chain. And it's confidential.
Everything's confidential.
Certainly.
Absolutely.
Perhaps with the potential for there to be release of information agreements so that the clinician through Hazel might be in contact with professionals here at the school to be able to.
Follow all the.
So, so yes, just contract us contemplate releases being signed by the, by, so first of all, we wouldn't be able to go and talk to Hazel Health and say, hey, we have identified a family without that family for signing release for us to go and communicate with that.
Those protocols are always in place, no matter who is being referred to whom.
And that sharing of information is one of the things that we put into uh the contract, so both parties understand that that goes both ways.
We even do that with summer camp with the community center, the family sign the uses. We're pretty strict about confidentiality.
Well, and I I just wondered if if parents could come and ask for that referral or if it would only go the other way where professionals at the school recommended that. Does it go both ways?
It could.
Could.
Uh, it it's new and and we're not quite sure how it's going, how how it's going to get airborne. We just know that it's a service that we would like to offer our families.
Right, to 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 jump on on that, it's up to the district here uh how they want to handle that moving forward in terms of how public they want to be about these these services being available. So certainly, if a family was aware of it, they could either reach out to us to learn more information. Uh, it's, so I think that communication uh can go both ways.
And the free part is is really all of it, because, you know, even there's a co-pay, it's.
Right.
With everything, which can be too much for some families.
Which could be the barrier.
It could be the barrier.
Of um people going above and beyond.
I I I don't, I just want to be careful about the cost to the families. I don't want to necessarily suggest that in each and every case, there wouldn't be costs associated with the families. There is no cost to the district. You're not agreeing to pay out certain monies. Uh, the way Hazel Health uh is funded is it's through the federal government through Medicaid reimbursement.
I can see a number in there.
That's how, that's how they're.
Million dollars.
They're funded, but I don't want to suggest that necessarily every family that is is getting a free service on there. That's going to depend on a whole host of issues that we wouldn't be able to be privy to.
Generally speaking, it's accessible.
Any other discussion? All right. I, shall I have a motion to vote?
You do have, you do have the motion.
The motion, it's, so it's called. We will, uh, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Aye. I was Wilson's first to vote last. Excellent. Are there any member requests or information from the administration or legal counsel?
Yes, I have. I had somebody, but family reach out as far as uh communications to uh homeschooling students, as far as them being able to be invited to school-wide activities and how there's no communications to them. Um, not them particularly, but in general uh with the, with homeschooling students. And just curious to, what can we do to improve that? And I know it's not on the agenda right now, but that's something. How do we communicate to our homeschool students? Because they are eligible to come in and still participate in some of our programs here. And as well as the activities outside, so how are they? How can we make this work?
Yeah, it it's, we are, we're working at it and it's, I mean, we've had, um, I mean, I'll use basketball as an example. There is a basketball player and, you know, we had a dance where there was a homeschool student there. Um, you know, it's an, it's it it's something that Ms. Darlene and her communication will always say, you know, make sure we get this out to um homeschool uh students.
The parents group.
I imagine that too, actually, the, we're redesigning the online registration process, which should hopefully be coming out in the next week or with the vacations, but um as part of that, all registration, not just primary, but outplacement its homeschool families. Everybody will be registered online through the same portal. Uh, and we're looking at updating the information that's provided to us so we can capture all of that. The current homeschool process actually doesn't include a lot of required information, like email addresses, phone numbers, cell phones, that kind of stuff. So a lot of families also don't necessarily provide us that info. Some proactive things we tell them, if anybody wants to be included, they can certainly email the office. Uh, and we will add them to all of our lists, uh, but we do maintain a list of known contact information for all school families that we can include in parents' groups and things like that, uh, parents that are close to each other. Um, but we are definitely looking to make it a more comprehensive data gathering process to get those useful information. And and allow them to select whether they want to sign up.
And we spoke about this at the last meeting, that there's a lot of information available on the website now.
It it's typically a very paper-based process that is just not very comprehensive. We don't want to collect that data with that intention as well, but we need to collect more data for all kinds of things nowadays, so that will be part of what's included in that overall.
Yeah, I think the the message that kind of got sent to me was that they want to be, they want to feel like they are still welcomed and be part of the extra activities that go on at the school. And and I think that was kind of the message that was like really being driven to me was that we don't feel that because we don't get all the communications. So and not going as negative, this is a.
No, this is great. I mean, and this was good feedback that we're going to be able to capture more data. I mean, certainly if people want to be involved, like Michael's saying, they should have that ability to do so and and do these extracurricular activities and or activities that we provide to not only the students in Wilbur McMahon School, but throughout the community, so.
We are committed to capturing more data.
Excellent.
You want to. It does, it's no out-of-pocket costs regardless of insurance status for family.
A two shot.
Thank you.
With that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, wait, the regular school committee meeting. Boy, he's warm now, huh? Well, we will have a brief recess and then we will reconvene in executive session.
So moved.
What is that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you all for coming out tonight bearing the weather. It was a little bit today. You're not, you're not joking about that. I have the heavy gear in the car because I was like.
Okay, take it.
All right, I will consider a motion to enter into executive session under R I G L section forty two dash forty six dash five eight two. Be a roll call and I will be last. Yes.
Susan Chase?
Aye.
Amy Glaser?
Aye.
Mark Glaser?
Aye.
Mike Rocha?
Aye.
Travis Hattie?
Aye. Excellent, welcome to executive session, item two one. Okay, take it. All right, I will consider a motion to enter into executive session under R I G L section forty two dash forty six dash five eight two. Be a roll call and I will be last. Yes.
Susan Chase?
Aye.
Amy Glaser?
Aye.
Mark Glaser?
Aye.
Mike Rocha?
Aye.
Travis Hattie?
Aye. Excellent, welcome to executive session, item two one.
Excellent, I'd like to welcome everybody back to open session and notify that there were no votes taken in executive session. And I will consider a motion to seal the minutes. Do I have a motion? So moved. But second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. And then from there, I will consider a motion to adjourn